All right, I would like to call this October 17th, 2022 Slovenia Board of Education meeting to order. Adam, would you call the roll?
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mrs. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Lavlette?
Here.
Mr. Feller?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Motley, we are with you.
Thank you, Mr. Feller, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm following up and wanted to provide a response based on the comments that we had at our last board meeting from a Sleepy Hollow resident and her concerns about noise from our athletic fields and lights and things of that nature. So, Mr. Zirov, Mr. Irwin, and myself met with Dr. Terry Keller, who's the interim president of Lord's University, along with Janet Eaton-Smith, who is the athletic director of Lord's University, and we met to discuss all the issues that were brought forward. First of all, there is an acknowledgement that there has been significant growth in the Lord's athletic program over the last several years, and even more recently, they have included non-varsity sports for their students to participate in. So, the perspective that if the fields are being used more than 10 years ago and even five years ago, the answer is yes. But typically, it's right now, from what we understand, the fields are being used, on average, three to four days a week, depending on if there's championships or something like that, but typically, three to four days a week. And the sports that are included are football, soccer, and lacrosse, as well as softball. So first, I wanted to talk about music, because there was a concern, one, about potential vulgarity in the language that's being used or heard in the music, the loud, how loud the music is, and when it's being played and how often. And it was our discussion that we determined that music is played during Friday night games, and those are contests, and we also use it during warmups and also during our halftime. However, interesting with Lord's, and this was a caveat, their soccer team actually is quite international. They are 85% of the team, men's soccer team, the players are from a variety of different countries and a variety of backgrounds. And hence, when they are playing different music, they are playing international music that represents the countries in which, or the nationalities in which these individuals are from. I will also share with you that for late practices, because sometimes Lord's practices, believe it or not, from 9:00 to 11:00 p.m., who knew, they don't use our speakers. They actually use a boom box, but nothing too loud. We at Northview, for our own athletics, we do use the speakers, but we only use the two that are mounted on the press box. There's a total of five speakers. Three are on the visitor's side, two are on our press box, and those press box speakers are pointed down toward the stands so the people on the home side and the stands can have the best understanding of what's being conveyed by the press box. In regards to explicit language, both sides. Northview actually uses an app called Neptune, and Lord's University actually uses Spotify to actually only play clean music. There is no explicit language that is used. Or Neptune, actually, the one that we use for our district, it's all clean lyrics. So, there was a question if perhaps some of the international music, they may think they're hearing something because it's not necessarily all in English. There are a variety of songs being played, but they assured us that they are not using explicit lyrics or music that has explicit lyrics. The other piece, as far as lights are concerned, during practice, we do use our stadium lighting, but it's only at 30% capacity. I learned something today that for us to use 100% of our lights, there has to be two keys that are used to turn on the lights at the stadium. Lord's University, their coaches only have one key. So, when they have late night practices and they're practicing for soccer, they do use our lights, but they are only at 30%. And that's to shine on the field, so obviously to support our athletes from Lord's. And our students, of course, do not practice that late. And in regards to the restrooms, Lord's was very candid and said it has been an issue, but they have documentation of communication with the other universities, warning them and telling them that not using our restrooms is unacceptable. And this seems to be a problem in the location of this visitor concession stands, which are closest to Sleepy Hollow. Individuals going behind those concession stands to alleviate themselves, I'll put it that way, instead of going to the restrooms across the way. Is that accurate, Tim? Do you remember that correctly?
Yeah, it looks like a restroom facility, but it's actually a concession stand. So, instead of running all the way around to the restroom, they go behind the concession stand, which is closer to Sleepy Hollow.
Correct.
Homes where they have access to that taking place. So, it has been addressed before.
Absolutely. And they said we even want a copy of the documentation that they sent to their visiting teams, that we could certainly secure that copy. But I wanted to make sure that we followed up and followed through with meeting with Lord's and putting our heads together about addressing the concerns of our community members, because that's a priority for us. And the only other thing that I have is we have parent-teacher conferences the end of next week. Just brief announcements, Friday, we have our community tailgate at Northview High School. We're excited about that. We have our annual football game between Southview and Northview. And in addition, on Saturday, we have our Athletic Hall of Fame luncheon, and I believe that's at the country club, Slovenia Country Club. I was going to say Highland Meadows, but it is Slovenia Country Club. So, lots of great events. We had a great fall festival. I was intrigued. We had a huge turnout. I volunteered for the chamber. I have my own little green vest and work in the crowd. It was great. But we estimate there were over 35,000 individuals at the fall festival this year, record numbers. And Buster the Bus made his first appearance. That's his inaugural appearance. And he's the cutest little thing. If you haven't seen him, he's a miniature school bus. He's a preschooler, and he is working with our preschool students in our kindergarten through second grade students about bus safety this week. And I got squirted by Buster the Bus because he was excited to see me, and I got squirted. So, it was all great. It was wonderful. It was cute. And that's all I have, Mr. Feller.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation from the Olander Park System.
Thank you, Mr. Feller. Thank you, Dr. Motley, for having us today. My name is Mark Kulutki, and I am the chairman of Citizens for Olander Park System, working in support of the issue six replacement levy that's on the ballot next month. I want to say, as a former board member from a long time ago, you've certainly updated your meeting facility since I was on the board, because we met in the Southview cafeteria, right? Not nearly as quiet or nice as this. With me tonight are Erica Burry, who's the executive director of TOPPS, and also Jason Mishka, one of the campaigns and the co-chairs. In my experience on the board and on city council, I've come to understand that citizens assume that elected officials have a handle on everything going on in town, right? And I think this group probably does. So, they asked your opinion on things like ballots. So, we thought that it would be helpful for us, with the vote coming up, to brief you so you can answer those questions appropriately and answer them.
Thanks for having us tonight again. As Mark said, my name is Jason Mishka. I'm one of the co-chairs for the levy campaign. And I just want to tell you a little bit about the park system. Some of this is a reminder, some of it you may already know. But Olander Park System is an Ohio Revised Code 1415 designated park district. The boundaries for the park district is the Slovenia School District. So, it's an overlap between the city and the township and so on. The parks included in that have expanded beyond just the Olander Park. So, it's Olander Park, the Sylvan Prairie Park, Fossil Park, Wetstone Park, and then also the Slovenia Oaks Savannah, obviously right behind Slovenia, Southview High School, no, the Southview Oaks Savannah. For clarification purposes, this is a separate entity, of course, from the City of Slovenia Parks, separate from the Slovenia Rec District, and it is also separate from the Slido Metro Parks. The Olander Park System is funded by a five-year levy, and that levy is set to expire on August 30, sorry, August 31st, December 31st of this year. The amount of the levy is currently .8 mil, and what we're proposing is a replacement of that, so at the same values. This will not be a new tax. And we estimate that the annual cost for an individual house with a value of $250,000 is $56 per year. And that was based off, the $250 was based off of the annual value that we found for the Slovenia area. So, Erica Burry is the director, the collective director of the park system, and she's going to tell you about some of the improvements and the funds that have been used over the last couple of years and some planned expansion.
Thank you so much, Jason. Thank you again for making time for us today. I really appreciate it. So, as Jason said, we have a levy every five years. We come before the community, and it's kind of a hey, however we do an opportunity. And five years ago, we were able to secure an increase, and we, I think, have done a really great job with those extra dollars. We put in a walking trail around Olander Park. We added a walking trail to Wetstone Park. We improved the sliding hill at Sylvan Prairie. We're doing extension, and we've done and are continuing to work on extension, extensive, thank you, renovations at Fossil Park. We've contracted with the Nature Conservancy to do conservation work for us. We have, you know, we were really active all during COVID, so even though we couldn't do in-person programming, we did a lot of virtual programming. We were able to really engage the community that way. And we leveraged $100,000 in grant dollars in the last five years for a number of projects. So, we feel like we did a pretty good job in terms of making improvements that were long needed to our park district, and we look forward in the next five to doing additional projects, including some updates to current facilities. But one of the big things that we are working on, and just actually met with the engineer's office today about, was extending the University Parks Trail. So, Metro Parks is currently looking for funding to complete the section between Silica Road and Centennial Road. And the Olander Park System, we will be responsible for taking that portion from Centennial Road all the way up to Sylvan Prairie Park and potentially connecting with the Timberstone Campus at Her Road and Slovenia Avenue. So, we're really excited about that project. We're looking at construction in 2025. That's going to take a significant amount of revenue, and we're starting to kind of build our bank up a little bit now to do that project. We're also looking, we have access to ODOT funds in the 1545 Park District, so we will be putting a new entrance at Sylvan, on Slovenia Avenue, at Sylvan Prairie. And we're also looking at securing some land and water funds for restroom and shelter facility there. So, we have a lot of projects that we have planned for the next five years, but that bike trail, that's like $2.5 million. So, that's going to be our big, our big pie in the sky piece. Do you guys have any questions? We don't want to go too long today, but you all know how to get in touch with us. I don't know if you received this in your packets or not, but I'll leave this here. You can, it's just some general information about the ballot measure and about what we've been up to and what we are planning to do. We also did have a new mission and vision statement that we're super excited about this year. We did a strategic plan, so. And we're going to launch a new logo and name after the levy, though.
I think you guys do a great job.
Thank you so much.
The park system in Slovenia is second.
I love the prairie. The prairie is my favorite.
Thank you.
One question I did have, though. Dogs at Olander, is there ever discussion about allowing dogs?
All the time.
I'm asking for myself.
So, the big challenge we have at Olander is space, really. And obviously, I hear this question regularly from folks, like, why can't I bring my dogs to Olander? And I have a dog, so I totally get that. I wish I could bring my dog to work, right? But because of the size and the massive use of that park, adding dogs to the mix with the bicycles and the people and the kids on tricycles and strollers just is a little bit more than we feel is healthy use of that park. On top of, you know, dogs poop, and there's that mess to clean up, and we have a water, body of water that we want people to be able to swim in and fish in. And so, we want to keep that as healthy as possible. So, with the soil composition, which is basically sand that just goes straight through to the water, we want to make sure we're keeping that water body safe. And quite honestly, it's a resource for people who don't like dogs. We get a lot of folks who come to Olander instead of going to Wildwood because there are no dogs at Olander Park. So, it's a great resource for folks who would prefer to get their outdoor engagement without, you know, for their friends.
I see that. And the prairie fills that void. It's a great place for dogs.
That's exactly right. Yeah, Sylvan Prairie and the Corey Ridge Bike Trail, you know, we always say, hey, you know, you can just go down the road, and there's a great park there to take your puppy to. So, thanks for that question.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys so much. We really appreciate your time.
Let me just say, Ms. Conklin, that I was working Fall Festival yesterday, handing out stickers, right, for Olander, and I got that question about 15 times. So, I'm glad that she's here, because I would have, all I could tell the people yesterday was I'm in sales, not me. We hope this was helpful for you today. That was what we set out to provide, was some fact-based for you all. I will say, though, that as either a board or as individual board members, we would be delighted if you decided to give us some sort of endorsement. We understand that that's not board policy, but if what the city council did was pass a resolution to them, every council member sent us a letter of endorsement as well. So, not necessary, just a little add-on if you want to take some action or anything. But in the meanwhile, thank you so much for having us, and please talk to your friends and neighbors about issue six. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
We have in the past endorsed Olander's levies. I think we always have been supportive of that. We're your great partners with us, so I would make a motion to enforce them.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, call the roll. Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing our expectations.
All right, now we are at the first opportunity for public participation for agenda items.
I don't believe, so Jason, you signed up, but that was for the Olander Park.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So, Dr. Motley, we're back with you.
Thank you, Mr. Feller. I recommend item 5.1, the acceptance of a donation of five boxes of compositions books from Ms. Nima Ngor.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll. Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you for that gift. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much, absolutely. I recommend item 5.2, which is an overnight field trip for the Southview High School coach and legal advisor, Mr. Dennis Lyle, to accompany students to Chicago, Illinois to attend the Empire Mock Trial International Tournament.
It's mouthful.
I'm over.
It's a mouthful.
I'll second. Any discussion?
They won this before, and we're like world champs.
I know. They're awesome. They're so good.
All right, Adam, call the roll. Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.3 for approval. It is a memorandum of understanding between the Slovenia School District Board of Education and our Slovenia Education Association to agree to parameters for the remaining part of this school year for collaboration days for our staff.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? And this is just for this school year, correct?
Just for the school year. Does not set a precedent for any school year moving forward.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, call the roll. Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.4, memorandum of understanding for a project unify coordinator. Again, this is between our school board and the Slovenia Education Association.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, call the roll. Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.5, an MOU, another memorandum of understanding for the resident educator supplemental positions.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any discussion? All right, call the roll. Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.6, a policy revision for a first read. This is policy 5410, and it actually outlines board policy for promotion, academic acceleration, placement, and retention.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Technically, wouldn't need a, it's just first read.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. Yeah, you're right, it's first read.
So, it's on here as action, though.
Yeah, it does say action, but yeah, it's just first read.
We memorialize it.
Then you want us to vote or?
Item 5.7 is our policies for second read as listed. We are seeking approval for weapons on, or items, policies on weapons, a preschool program, career advising. There is a host of policies for a second read and to be adopted by our board.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any discussion? Call the roll. Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.8, which is a resolution in support of the City of
Slovenia's downtown public improvement efforts and the use of the tax increment financing per the exhibit as included on the board agenda.
I'll move a little of the resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Adam, you're real comfortable with this, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Been working with Bill and their team for a couple of months now, and really appreciate their collaborative efforts on this. I mean, for the first 10 years, and then 11 through 30 will be made whole and receive all the tax money. So, it sounds like a great project.
Thank you for your work, Adam.
Yeah, thank you.
You explained it so well. I didn't have any questions. As long as you know I wasn't ignoring it.
Any other discussion? All right, call the roll. Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. That includes my items.
Thank you. Mr. Dabursky, with you?
I am recommending items 6.1 through 6.3 on a consent agenda basis. 6.1 are licensed substitute teachers. 6.2 is a licensed unpaid lead. And 6.3 are licensed extra duty.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 6.1 through 6.3.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll. Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm recommending items 7.1 through 7.5 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1 are classified new hires. 7.2 are classified personnel changes. 7.3 are classified resignations. 7.4 is for a classified substitute. And 7.5 are just the board approval of our subwages this school year.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 7.1 through 7.5.
I'll second.
Discussion? I have a question. So, we've got two resignations for paraprofessionals at Central Trail, and a meeting or two ago, we had a couple of speakers that spoke about that. Is that?
They're not additional. Those are the two.
Those are the two?
They were not.
Are we, I'm assuming we have efforts to try and fill those positions, or?
They are. They're open, and we're doing pretty well. I looked, you know, ideally, we need five at Central Trail, and last week, we had four actual paraprofessionals with one extra substitute filling the five spots. And we're still actively trying to fill a handful of spots throughout the district.
Do we have any idea, I mean, are they leaving for different reasons?
They didn't seem to be leaving to go work in another district. So, it's not that they're leaving to seek the same position somewhere else. You know, I did not talk to that person who went from what I understand. Well, it's a difficult job, and then when they're shorthanded as well, you know, frustrations become up there. And so, I think they've just rated it higher ways.
Do you find that the substitute wages are adequate to attract substitutes?
It's a good question. We ran something over the summer where all of our neighboring districts, we had a spreadsheet that was going around with all of our local districts to see if one person was more competitive than another. And we were all about the same wages for each of our spots. So, you know, it's hard, and the wages are not, you know, huge, but they're competitive. And I think more so than the wages, it's just the workforce that, we just don't have a workforce out there. And what we had before that was really beneficial was we had a subpool of classified people that we could pull and use. And what we've done, because the workforce is so small, we've kind of depleted that subpool. And those subs that we had are now contracted employees. So, not only do we have to continually hire new contracted employees, but we need to replenish the subpool as well. Hopefully, buses looked great yesterday coming down to the parade. So, as the bus come down here, we had really big advertisement on the side of those buses. And, you know, a lot of these midday jobs are perfect for some of our parents and neighbors and things like that. So, hopefully, 35,000 people at the Fall Festival Parade, it'd be about seven. But our wages are competitive with the like jobs from other districts.
But I guess I would, you know, on that, I mean, I know we just approved it, like substitute wages, but, I mean, it's a tough job.
It is.
Being a paraprofessional. And, I mean, do we need to look at maybe bumping that up a little bit? And that's a, it's a tough job, you know. And not all of the positions are necessary and important, but, you know, that one in particular, it's hard for a classroom to function without.
Very difficult.
Yeah, it's very difficult for the classroom to function without, you know, appropriate coverage with, you know, paraprofessionals.
It is. And that's something, I mean, I have to talk with Adam about, just because we gotta, you know, we always have to think about being physically responsible as well. And so, that's something we would have to look into to see if it is. I know right now we're comparing. You know, I can't speak for where that wage would be. Fears would be you raise that wage up, there's still a shortage of workforce. So, now, we're going to reward the people that are here for us right now. Will it attract other individuals to come and work for Slovenia Schools, I don't know, because the workforce, you know, every campus I've been to over the last handful of months, we're not alone. This is across the board in every school district. So, I don't know if a higher wage will attract more people, because the workforce should naturally.
I think it's something we continue to monitor, continue to talk to other schools, and make sure that we're competitive for the time being, and look at an adjustment for next year if we need to.
I think we need to look at the possibility that our competition isn't just other school districts. It's, you know, people who are taking positions in other areas because they can earn a higher wage. You know, people might be wanting to do this, so.
Yeah, easier job, easier job at a higher wage.
Right.
Our biggest selling point right now, and we try to sell this, you're right, you can get a higher wage in other places, but our biggest benefit that we have is we are a public school district, which means we have a great benefit package, and we have great retirement. And a lot of those other places don't have that. And so, we're trying to screen that and sell that, because a lot of times, people aren't looking that far or that deep. They just look at their hourly wage, not knowing that there is a really nice benefit package attached to that, and there's retirement in there as well.
Yeah, and the other competitor we have is the business workforce, and they have the ability to increase, you know, costs or increase revenue side of things a little bit easier than we can. So, when it comes to discussing the competition in that regard, it's hard to compare because of, on the budgetary side.
It doesn't. There's a correlation here between subwages and contracted wages as well. And remember, contracted wages are going to be a negotiated item. And so, if we raise our subwages, are almost going to match what our contracted wages are, and there's going to have to be a correlation between what our contracted wages are, which is a negotiated item, first of all, our subwages are, we decide on, so.
Have we done any exit interviews with these folks?
Officially, no.
I'm wondering if that might be helpful.
It's a great suggestion.
Get an idea of what?
Why?
Yeah. Whether it's, you know, this isn't what I thought it was. It's just not something I don't think I can continue, or wages, or whatever, but it would at least be helpful to have some feedback from them.
Great idea.
Do you have any idea how long-term the employees were? Were they all over the place, or were they fairly recent?
Well, you know, and we have these two resignations here, but I would not think we have amassed an exit of people leaving. And so, I know for some of these individuals, they were less than a 10-year.
All right, any other discussion? All right, any other discussion? Penn, call the roll. Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm recommending approval of items 8.1 through 8.4 on a consent agenda basis. 8.1 are supplemental positions for the 22, 23 school year. 8.2 are some corrections from previous supplemental position postings. And 8.3 is a resignation of supplemental positions for the...
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 8.1.
Julie?
Oh, you weren't down.
Well, no.
8.4.
Now with 8.3.
I don't see.
There's 8.4, too.
8.4 is volunteer school.
Well, 8.3's got the 21, 22 school year listed.
Oh, I see.
And so I've...
Oh, 8.1, no?
8.3.
Oh, I'm sorry, 8.3 does 8.1, 22.
I pulled 8.3 off, and so I get a correction on that, for sure.
Oh, he does, he's one, yeah. It's just, it's just up on your list. Okay, so I'll move approval. I recommended, on a consent agenda basis, items 8.1, 8.2, 8.4.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll. Who's second, then?
Kim.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
All right, now we are at board committee reports. Kim?
I did not attend SSPO, so I would refer to Jill on that communications. This went out. Hope you all saw it. I want to thank Amy. I think it looks really great. I'm very, I think it looks awesome, and I think it's a great reach out to not just our parents, but to everyone out in the community. So kudos on that. I got my Capitol Conference packet in the mail last night, where I had to go for a meeting. So excited about it.
Have fun.
Yep. And Alka?
I left early from Spat, so she's got math. I did get to go to Armory Hills volleyball game, some great girls, some championship. And they did a really good job. They were playing against an undefeated team, but they really, they did a really good job. It was very proud. I also went to Southview's play this weekend, and they also did a great job. I forgot one thing.
Yes.
The parade participation was amazing.
Wasn't it?
First for the schools. I mean, and the bus was cool, but also saw principals, teachers, kids, patrols. I mean, obviously, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, but it was really, and I took some pictures, and I haven't posted them yet, because I'm fighting Nicole here, but it was just really good to see. I really, and I saw you manning the dyno run and...
Yeah, that was fun, too. It was just a great community event.
It was. It was very, it was wonderful.
We saw their heads fly by. We were at the Spat, too.
The first relay, though, they took off before we said go, so we had to quickly pick up our women, because they were just running. We didn't even say go yet, but it was great.
Those dinosaurs are always really eager.
Where do they get the dinosaur pool from? I'm curious. Just chamber volunteers?
I, I, they're children, so I'm not sure. Yeah, they're children. I'm not sure how they go about doing that.
I think that advance is just getting greater and greater every, every year. It's amazing how far it's come for the last 20. I mean, I remember taking my nephew there when he was two, and it was nothing like this.
Yeah, it has really grown. Tammy and I did a little stand at the Savannah school's table. Nobody was there.
During the parade?
No, from like, what, one to two.
Yeah, that's the parade.
Well, we were still very busy.
It is.
Yeah, so we went and we...
Handed out papers and candy.
We did.
Well, we'll have to have you guys join us next year and just volunteer your time and come and join the tent. We're there from like 10:00 in the morning till 4:00, so come where you're at.
It's always put out to the board, too, to like, take a shift here and there, so.
Really? Well, I've only known since COVID, we didn't have it. Last year, we had individuals that had their own. So it's a little different during that time. But I think as a show of unity, we really should have you sign up or just come when you're able and hang out with us, because we have administrators that are manning that during the parade time, because we want to see our kids in the parade and encourage and support them. But feel free, come on down and hang out with us. We'd love to have you. Get you some shirts and stuff, swag, it'd be good.
All right, I don't have a whole lot this time. We've got LMRC tomorrow, and I've got Sage Yard meeting next week. I just did want to say congratulations to our high school runners. The NLL Cross Country Championships was Saturday, and all of our runners did a great job. My daughter and Tammy's daughter finished next to each other, so that was kind of cool.
This was ahead of mine.
Not by much, not by much. So that was, that was a, that was a great event, a lot of fun, so that's all I got. Jill?
I, first of all, I'd second what Kim said as part of the communication committee. Congrats to Amy for the newsletter and all the hard work that went into it. Had, at the SSPO meeting last week, we had a transportation presentation by Mr. Walker. And the folks that were attending the meeting, I think, found it very, very informative and helpful to hear directly from them what's going on and what's, you know, what they're trying to do to make sure all the kids go to school in a timely fashion. We have an upcoming SCS, Savannah Community Services meeting this week. And last week, I also had a strategic plan meeting with Josh's group, and we're moving forward with the strategic plan. That's a, that was, that's a...
The Savannah Prevention Alliance has a lot going on right now. The golf outing was very successful. It exceeded the fundraising goal by over $1,000, which is great. Thank you, Greg, for supporting, and everybody else who supported.